Thank you and welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, number nine for 2022. We have all councillors in attendance this morning, so I'll hand over to you councillor Kunsman for the acknowledgement.
Thank you Chair. Today this committee recognises the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. We support their right to democratic representation and social inclusion. If the City Council respectfully recognises the ongoing challenges faced by Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, and this committee supports their inclusion and participation in community cultural arts and sports activities.
Thanks councillor. Do any committee members have any declarations of interest? Moving on to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes, the recommendation here is that the minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee held on the 15th of September 2022 be confirmed. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Kunsman. And a seconder? Thank you Mayor. Any discussion or corrections amendments being the case, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Moving on to our only agenda item in the officers' reports today, this is the Aquatic Facilities Action Plan. Would any member of committee wish to speak to a council officer? Could I call the relevant council officers to the lectern? Thank you.
Good morning, this is Andrea Moserineke, I'm the senior officer, planning officer for open space and recreation.
Good morning Andrea. Over to you Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. May I ask, thank you very much for the report. And obviously I hadn't seen the report till it came to committee, but I have asked out of session on how much this plan would actually cost. Do you mind providing those details of how much this plan would cost if it was implemented?
Sure. So the number of recommendations in the report which have financial implications. So the key items in this report are the replacement of the Rosewood Aquatic Centre. The Rosewood Aquatic Centre was built in 1966 and is at the end of the useful life, so it needs to be replaced. And to do that, the order of cost is between five and seven and a half million dollars. But please be aware that there's already funding set aside in the three-year capital programme for the concept plan and the detailed design for the replacement of this facility. Another big ticket item would be indoor pool at the Bundamba Aquatic Centre. And the order of cost would be in the area of three and a half to five million dollars. And the biggest item would be a new facility, potential regional aquatic facility in the south of council area. And a new pool would cost in the order of twenty to twenty-five million dollars. So given these numbers, coming in the order of cost of twenty-eight and a half to thirty-seven and a half million dollars. But be aware that this is strategic plan, so it's a long-term commitment. And all these projects will be evaluated and prioritised as part of the budget deliberations. These recommendations are based on participation rates, on population growth, on research was undertaken, expert advice and also an outcome from the community engagement. And this also aligns with our strategic documents, being the active strategy, where this improvements are an outcome. And it was confirmed with, we have done a trend study in 2022 where swimming wars has very high participation rates. And the facility improvements were also confirmed in the community engagement, which was part of this action plan. So it's really a solid basis and research was undertaken to come to these recommendations.
Thank you.
Councillor Kunsman.
Thank you. I read this report and I accepted that Rosewood had reached end of life. And then I started to realise I didn't understand that. Can you help me understand that? Why is it end of life?
So as I said, it was built 1966. Usually pools have around fifty years' life, but it also depends on the condition of the existing facilities. So there are some change rooms beyond repair, so to speak, also the pool itself is beyond repair. It was repaired and patched up before number of years. So we have to make it, it doesn't get better, it gets more and more costly. So and because all of the facilities, so we had an assessment or we looked at, could we keep some of the facilities? But they are beyond the repair, so this gives us an opportunity. By replacing, it gives us also an opportunity to do a new concept plan, a new planning for it. And then replace the facility to work better within the.
I thank you for that, but noting that it's working at full capacity, I'm just trying to put those two things together. So when will people in Rosewood likely to have another pool, do you think, if we accept it?
Well, this depends on the funding. As I said, we have funding for the concept design and detailed design in the three-year capital programme. And then it is in the ten-year capital programme already in there, but usually it will be constructed afterwards. It depends on the council budget deliberations.
But it will have full use in the meantime?
Pardon?
It will have full use in the meantime, is that right?
Yeah, it would be probably three, four years, we're looking at least.
Okay, that's why I'm finding end of life difficult to understand?
Yeah.
Because we're proposing that it's going to continue for years?
Well, we start this year with the concept plan, it's usually, that's the progression, one-year concept plan, second year detailed design and then the build.
Okay, thank you.
Noting that we have actually funded the design case for the Rosewood Aquatic Centre. As a recommendation here in the report, six point six, it calls it out. I just want to highlight and clarify here that in the Bundamba Aquatic Centre example, we've actually called out explicitly in the report that there would be a 25 metre heated and all abilities access. But there's no mention of all abilities access when talking about the Rosewood Aquatics Facility in this particular recommendation. So I'm just ensuring that that is a key consideration. And council wouldn't be building a pool in the year 2025, six or seven without, you know, full understanding of Disability Discrimination Act.
Correct. It would have disabled access, yes, that's part of, because you have to provide disabled access.
And do we envisage that, once we get deeper into the planning of the Rosewood Aquatics Facility, that that might go out for some interim consultation with key user groups? To see if that is in line with what the community will actually be using the pool for?
Yes, as part of the planning of the Rosewood Pool, there will be community consultation and engagement undertaken, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Johnny.
Thank you. So I appreciate the findings of the report and I think it's well researched with the needs, I guess, of our community. But just querying the financials that we used were the 2018, 19. I'm wondering if there could be like an update or if it's possible to evaluate this moving forward on more current figures? Just so that we've got a better understanding of costs involved going forward.
Certainly it can be updated. However, the final cost will be available when we go further into concept and detailed design. Because we need to have an understanding about surface, so there will be a geotechnical assessment on where the pools are constructed and they determine the actual cost.
Yes.
So while we can give approximate or it will be another order of cost in line with general increases, we can do that yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all. Thank you.
So the recommendation here is that council adopt the Aquatic Facilities Action Plan as detailed in attachment one. I'm happy to move that. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I now open that up for any further discussion. Mayor?
If I may Chair, as councillor Johnny has pointed out, I think the 2018, 19 cost about $37 million, which we need, obviously need to find in a budget. But I guess I'm looking at the community engagement plan, which is page 64 of 81 for us. The survey results were 145 people for the aquatics and on the Bundamba Swim Centre was only 42. So I guess I make the observation to the organisation that probably the most active people in the community who are out there engaging are us councillors. It would be great if we councillors are engaged in this process so that we can encourage people to participate so we can get the best possible facilities in the future.
Yeah, noting that the engagement happened peak Covid as well, so that made it difficult. But I agree with you Mayor, I was thinking the same thing. We've recently had a great engagement down at the Georgie Conway Swim Centre at Lykart, where our stakeholder engagement manager actually attended the pool and spoke to those user groups and gleaned some really, really valuable data. So, I mean, that happened many, many, many months after we went to consultation on the facilities plan. So, yeah, I thought the same thing, that, you know, we do have lots of people active down at the pools and to have had their input, it could have made the report more robust.
And when I did ask some questions out of session, I just sort of asked how much money we did spend on the social media and Google advertising, you know, to get more people. We did spend several thousand dollars on that to get more people to respond, but I think we have a resource here, sitting here, that won't cost a cent. And that could be utilised better by the organisation.
Yeah, I just want to throw the conversation to committee in light of our planning scheme catch-up yesterday where we were looking at new population modelling as well. So this particular Facilities Action Plan uses the population data provided in the current LGIP rather than the new population data that has been modelled for us. So just thinking about, you know, what that means for the report and its accuracy. I don't believe that it changes the strategic intent of the report here. I mean, it's pretty clearly outlined on page 33 and well synthesised that Rosewood needs work. Bundamba needs work and we need to start future planning for a brand new aquatics facility down in the southeast region as well. So there's a lot here that we will obviously need to plug into the LTFF come budget discussions. Because I think it is really important that we continue to have these ongoing conversations about community infrastructure. And if we're here recommending to the council to adopt this Facilities Action Plan, then we've also got to be prepared to put our money where our mouth is. And as the Mayor and councillor Johnny have highlighted this morning, it could be in the order of 30 to 40 million dollars that we're committing this council to over a number of years. But that's a significant amount of money that needs to be a part of our consideration in the LTFF. I don't think we can in all good conscience adopt a facilities plan like this without then bringing it into the budget context. You know, all too often, you know, we've seen across local government for the better part of the last 20 years, documents, you know, sit on shelves and, you know, they're not really brought into the broader discussion around budget. But this will allow us to make great strategic decisions around our aquatic facilities moving forward. I'm really pleased to see that, you know, there's an all accessible theme here. I mean, that's what we've, that's 100% of the feedback that we got at the Georgie Conway Centre. It's really important. Councillor Kunsman, just to your point about the facility at Rosewood being at the end of its life, when you talk to some of the users out there, and one particular user comes to mind, my father, who was swimming in it in the pool back in the early 70s. So if the pool hasn't changed since then, it's definitely in need of some juicing. And I think that it's kind of an asset management term that it is at its end of life. It probably has been at the end of its life for 10 years, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it doesn't keep kicking and keep bringing in those summer crowds, because it's a real pleaser for the community out there.
No further juicing can be had Chair.
Yeah, I mean, there's only so much juicing over the years that can be done. But good to see that, you know, compliance with Disability Discrimination Act as well as a comprehensive community engagement to get that real world feedback from those users out there is in the pipeline is very reassuring to me at this point.
Just to follow up on the end of life issue, I do understand that if a facility costs more and more to run, but that's an indicator, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that I didn't understand that simple proposition. Just a couple of points. And I keep saying this about community development and that we are missing people who are not on the net, on the internet. I keep saying it and saying it. And we have not yet found a solution to that. The second one is that we're looking here at some preliminary work on multi-use for our facilities and I applaud that. That we could be increasing the capacity, sorry, increasing the capacity to undertake more visitation through other things other than actually swimming.
Yeah, other than just the pool. Great point. Yeah Mayor?
Come on Chair, I think it's also, as our city grows, page 17 with the recommendations also makes the point that the advice that we're getting is that Waluna Thaguen are expected to grow larger than Rosewood. Now, that's clearly not the case at the moment. So, you know, again, it's that future planning that we need to do and finding the best place for our future facilities.
Absolutely. Councillor Madsen.
Thank you Chair. What sprung to mind for me reading this report is we've got a bit of work to do in regards to making publicly owned swimming pools financially sustainable. I think publicly owned swimming pools are a great Australian tradition. And, you know, swimming has proven to be an essential skill that prevents loss of life. It's something that just has to happen. People need to learn to swim. It's also a great exercise for a variety of people, myself as somebody with a bad knee, eventually that'll be the only way I can exercise. In regards to how we operate them, I have heard things around the traps that other council areas actually find a level of profit out of their management of their swimming pools. That's not the case. out of their management of their swimming pools. That's not the case for us. So hearing things like it's an asset with a fifty-year life, I think we need to somehow look at how do we make that work financially so that we can continue to have public swimming pools? Because it is quite expensive, the maintenance obligations. And I think there's a complementary piece of work in the, you know, longer term that probably needs to occur. I agree that we need a new pool in the southwest of Ipswich, hundred percent. But, you know, how do you operate that in a way where it's viable? Because councils are operating under, you know, strenuous operating conditions across the state, limited revenue streams and, you know, you're signing up to an asset with a fifty-year operating cost associated. So they're just my thoughts in support of the plan in full. I just think that there's some complementary work we need to do to make sure that it happens and it's successful.
Agree. Councillor Kunzaman?
That concept of making them pay for themselves is difficult in a lot of ways. But one of the ways it's difficult is because they're utilised by people who have limited incomes but need therapy. And that's people with disability as well, but others as well that don't have the capacity to pay big fees. And of course, that's one of the reasons we function, isn't it, to meet that need? Thank you.
I don't believe you were making the assertion that I was pushing for that, but I'm not about stinging vulnerable user groups for more money to use our pools and looking at other things. Yeah, we should always be there to support those who need it.
And I think too, with us in council, our most expensive pool is, you know, Orion Lagoon, which is a great facility, but it chews up, you know, over half our budget, it was two million dollars for a mate, which we can never charge money for. You know, it's openly available. So I think for us to be profitable is probably a big ask. But yeah, I think how we provide those services for residents, we have to get that balance right.
I didn't mean to assert councillor Madsen that you were suggesting that people should pay more, the people on limited incomes should pay more. I didn't mean that.
Thank you councillor Kunzaman, I know that. I just want to remind everyone in the room, as I always do, I hate neoliberalism and will never support its implementation in the city of Ipswich.
Well, with no further discussion, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried and brings us to the end of our committee this morning at seven minutes past eleven. So the next committee will start at seventeen minutes past eleven.